Agenda for tonight.
Right, in looking at the agenda, we have the second item is our fiscal year 2014 audit report. And what I would like to propose to the board is we take our first item for individual action, which is voting on that audit report and do the item for individual action, that item, immediately following the audit report. And then we'll go to our third item for discussion, which we were going to review guiding principles. I'm going to do a late start. So if there's no objection from board members, we'll add these items to the agenda as I just presented as we move forward. All right. Very good. Public comments. This is an opportunity for members of the district to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board?
All of these people.
Yeah. But not during public comments.
Not during public comments.
All right. We'll move on to approval in a minute. Board members, you have in your packet minutes from the last school board meeting held on November 10th. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
Oh.
Moved by Ann, seconded by Carrie. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes say aye. Aye opposed. Question Carrie's coming up next. Announcements and recognition.
Okay, I just have a couple of announcements this evening. First of all, on November the 18th, 50 of our DECA students attended the Minnesota Timberwolves Links Business Club Day at the Target Center in Minneapolis. They heard from all the top level Wolves and Links managers to get a better understanding of sports marketing industry. On December 5th through the 7th, 11 of our DECA officers and leaders will be attending the DECA Central Regional Leadership Conference in downtown Minneapolis with approximately 2,500 of their closest friends from DECA students in 12 other midwestern states. They will be attending sessions led by various business CEOs, attend leadership sessions, hear speakers, and also get an opportunity to tour the Piper Jaffrey facility. And the second item I have is congratulations to Dr. Matt Helman.
Thank you.
On earning his doctorate. From Minnesota State University at Mankato, he will officially graduate. He's completed and successfully completed his defense dissertation. He will officially graduate on December the 13th, where he also will be the commencement speaker for that day.
Digging for the bottom of the barrel.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Other announcements or recognition? Julie?
Well, it's fun to see Bridgewater here, so we can thank you for the Veterans Day program. There were a number of board members there. And wonderful as always, lots of people around me making rookie mistakes and forgetting to bring Kool-Aid, so I was handing it out. And I think what always strikes me is have the kids and how serious they take the program and their demeanor is very serious and very respectful and very reverent. So thank you. It's a ton of work, but I think it's not only impacts the veterans, but our students and really the whole community. So thanks for your effort.
Other announcements? All right. We are ready to move on to our first item, which is Bridgewater. Are they up? Yes?
I see Nancy moving in the direction of voting.
And board members, I'll remind you that you had in your table file the PowerPoint.
I'd like to first begin by thanking you for allowing us this opportunity to share with you. And yes, one of the things with our Veterans Day Assembly, one of my goals ultimately is to have all of our students know the Star Spangled Banner without forgetting the words. And it's amazing to see at some of our sports competitions, the number of Bridgewater students that can stand up and sing the Star Spangled Banner from start to finish. And it's very rewarding. So thank you. It's nice to have all of you at our Veterans Day Assembly as well. We've had a lot of things, we've been working on a lot of things at Bridgewater this year. And like I said, this is a great opportunity for us to share some of the things that we've been working on. Also, it's also an opportunity for us to be transparent with you and look at some of the data from our past that hasn't been as glamorous. But we will share our words and we will share the things that are going really well at the same time. We start first, our mission statement is empowering the learner, building foundations. And you will hear a lot about our foundations that we have built starting this summer in terms of making things different for students. Again, we strive to be a respectful, successful, safe community of high achieving learners, and that is not done all by itself, it's done with a team. So I have brought with me a team tonight. We promised we're not going to go past two hours tonight. Oh, no way. Certainly, if I go two hours, something's really wrong. I'm ill. I'll pass it up to Hope.
Good evening. We're here to talk about where we've been and where we're going, and we're pretty excited about the steps that we're taking and the pieces that we're putting in place. Our 2013-14 site improvement objective was that all of our students would demonstrate growth towards grade level proficiency on our macro assessments, the MCA and the MAP. We measure that success in both proficiency and growth. So when we look at our growth, we put together a four-year trend history. And what you see, and I know you've had your Z-score lesson earlier this year, but this is Bridgewater Z-score trends over the past four years in reading and math. Where you see red would be areas where our students grew less than expected compared to their peers across the state. And where you see no red, the blue background, that would be our students grew more than their peers across the state. So we know that we have some areas that we need to work on, and we are addressing that. And our teams will speak to that tonight. And we also have some areas that we're really quite proud of, and we'll speak to that tonight as well. On our MAP growth, again, we did not hit the mark that we set for ourselves, slightly below the 50th percentile for growth in K-5 reading and K-5 math. Again, the steps that we are taking, we believe will help address this issue as well. We're not happy with this growth, and we are moving forward in an effort to change that and improve the results for all of our students. For proficiency, our MCA results for grades three through five, you can see that we did exceed our goal in fourth grade math, and we very much exceeded our goal in fifth grade reading. These two teams will speak to that. We were actually quite surprised by our third grade results this year. And it's something that we started to take a really deep look at and something that we will continue to address in the days ahead. For our K-2 students, we use the MAP test as our macro test. As you can see, we have in reading, our student proficiency rate, and that would be students scoring above the 33rd percentile, is hovering right around 70%. And we know that that is too low for what we want to put in place for RTI and supplemental programs like Title I. So again, we are working very hard to up that proficiency rate to more towards 80% of our students scoring above the 33rd percentile. We believe by addressing the state standards and the Common Core standards in both reading and math, we're going to do a better job of that this year. So our wins, as far as our assessment data goes, all of our subgroups met AYP. We're really proud of that and proud of the work that's being done to make sure our students in all of our student groups are doing the best that they can. Our EL math proficiency rate this year was 80%. Now, we have a relatively small cell size, but this is the third year of a very steep upward trend for us. So we're very proud of that. And again, fifth grade MCA reading, fourth grade MCA math, exceeding our goals. And then also, we had a good growth rate for our kindergartners in their fall-to-spring
So we feel that it's important to keep what works and keep those pieces in place. And we feel very fortunate to have programs like Level Literacy Intervention and the training that went along with that, as well as Touch Phonics. We also feel that other programs, like other things that we do, flexible grouping, also helps our teachers to plan how to work with students. So we have a lot of things that we're keeping, the Minnesota Reading and Math Core, foster grandparents, and the targeted reading and math interventions that the RTI coaches will put in place, and also our tutors and our teachers. So those are the things that we feel that work. And knowing that we still needed some room for growth, a teacher survey was conducted last spring to kind of focus on what were some areas of interest. And really developing a scope and a sequence for literacy was the highest rated choice. So as a result, teachers engaged in this work over the summer. And Hope is going to speak to that work that occurred in July.
So when we took a look at our assessment results and then took a look at our staff survey results, we knew that it was quite clear that the staff was asking for some help in the area of literacy. So we are fortunate that Nancy was a great supporter of this work, allowing a team of, a grade level team that consisted of two and sometimes three people to work for a week this summer on developing first, a scope and sequence for our literacy standards, when they're going to, what they're going to teach, and when they're going to teach it, and more importantly, when they expect their students to know it. So that was the first part of the week. We were able to actually do some cross-grade level informational sharing about standards, which was really interesting because our K-2 teachers were able to look at item samplers from the MCA and realize the rigor that is expected for a third grade at the end of the year. And then they began the work of developing some common assessments that they would use at their grade levels in the classrooms to measure student progress in meeting our state So we believe that these are some missing pieces that we discovered this year, and we're doing the work to put in place. And the essential questions of our PLCs, we all know them, and we realized though that we really needed to emphasize the first two. What do we want our students to learn, and how will we know if each student has learned it? And it was really with that mindset that we went into the work this summer, really attacking those two questions and developing a sequence and series of things that we needed to do to beef up our literacy instruction.
So as indicated by the data that you have seen earlier, we know that we have some room for growth. Well, research shows that when standardized test scores are low, common formative assessments will raise the scores when implemented consistently over time. So the power is really in both the assessment design and then what teachers and students do with the results. And with those, with using formative assessments, students can see achievement gains from 15 to 25 percentile points. So that's where we're headed with our PLCs and hope that we can see some success using those types of assessments. So common formative assessments are frequent, they are formative, meaning that teachers use them to really form their instruction, and our team develops. And the bottom line is that these formative assessments create more learning opportunities for students. It really sends a message that learning is reflective and ongoing. So purposely selecting formatively assessed standards that are essential to learn, hard to teach, and hard to learn is really the next step in our PLCs. So common formative assessments, it's just really essential to realize that they're continually a work in progress. Teachers regularly analyze results to determine what students know, what they need to know, and how to be responsive in their instruction. In addition, there are times in the assessments need revision based on student results. So common formative assessments also foster reflection for both the teacher and the students. Teachers reflect upon the results, tweak assessments, design small group and whole group lessons, and work to support student learning. Students can reflect upon their work as well through the revision, correction, more practice, and enrichment. The common formative assessments also involve horizontal and vertical collaboration. It's imperative for teachers to know where their students have been, where they currently are, and where they are going on that learning continuum. So knowing that, the vertical collaboration really ensures that students can dig deeper into the standards as they progress through school. The horizontal collaboration ensures that teachers have agreed upon criteria for proficiency and consistent expectations for student work. So at Bridgewater, all levels, all grade levels are working toward implementation to develop these common formative assessments. And the PLCs are at different stages of implementation. And now we have the tale of two PLCs.
So this is where the fun begins. So we're going to take you into two of our PLC teams. And I really want to thank all of these teachers for coming out tonight. We have a great showing. And I want to tell you that it's just an honor to work with these teachers who are in the trenches every day, working to make every child feel successful, both academically and emotionally. And I really applaud their efforts to constantly revisit their instruction to see if it's working. These teams that you're going to meet tonight are not content to stay in their comfort zone when thinking about their students. So I present to you our fourth grade team, who has enjoyed tremendous success in math over the years and is looking to improve student achievement in reading. They will be followed by the fifth grade team, who has made some major changes in how they approach the math instructional block. Again, my thanks to these teachers for all their hard work and their willingness to undertake these changes that will benefit all their students.
I'm Adam Danielson, I'm a fourth grade teacher. And basically about four years ago, we kind of analyzed math a little bit and what we were doing, and some things that we could work together on our PLCs to help. And we kind of started with that whole formative assessment piece. We pre-assess students, we do formative assessments between the pre-test and the post-test. We get to the summative test, and we check the results on that. And if students didn't achieve 80% or better, we do some reteaching to make sure they would meet the standard. And I think that showed with some excellent results with having the positive Z-score over the past four years. And it was really our whole team working together to make sure we settled results, re-taught, and met the needs of all the kids and flexed groups. So basically, we were seeing a disparity between how we were doing in reading and how we were doing in math. So with that conversation, when we saw our MCA results at the end of the year, we kind of looked at what we were doing well in math, and how can we incorporate that a little bit better with our reading instruction? So our team sat down and kind of tried to take the model that we were using in math and see if we could figure out a way to use that to do reading instruction. So that's the thing we've started off this year by doing, is kind of having those pre-tests and then making sure, you know, we're checking along the way as we're teaching a certain skill. And then if, you know, students don't get it at the end, we're making sure we're putting them in groups, making sure we reteach that skill to make sure they meet those standards.
I'm Dana Holden, and I work with Adam and the other teachers in the Bridgewater fourth grade team. And as he said, the main piece we noticed missing in our language arts curriculum, once we had our scope and sequence, which was a huge thing, was the checkpoints. With our everyday math program, we get feedback every day on whether they're understanding the concepts both introduced, reviewed, even what's coming next through the math boxes. They come back and they're always showing whether they get it or not. So we get so much data about that. And in reading, we really didn't have unit tests, we didn't have theme tests anymore. We had the teacher's feel and knowing that we taught stuff, and then we had the MCA and MAP test. We always chose to do the MAP test fall, winter, spring because we wanted and craved the data. But now this year, we decided that's not enough data, we need more. So Adam and I have been working, not just at PLC, but luckily, we have a common prep time. So we're asking the PLC questions almost on a daily basis. We come together, we look at our scope and sequence, our year at a glance, and we ask, what is it we want our students to learn? How are we going to know? So we find those common formative assessments. What are we going to do when they don't learn it? And how can we extend and enrich the learning for the students who have already demonstrated mastery? This has worked out really nicely. We then, with those formative assessments, are able to flexibly group the kids for the core instruction. So we're teaming, both of us maybe teaching on main idea and supporting details, but one of us can take it one direction and the other can go the other way. And then we also are doing flexible reading groups to, right now, we're mainly revisiting a topic where some students did not demonstrate mastery. And in this case, Mr. Danielson is working with those students to ensure that they understand main idea and supporting details. That's a huge part of the MCA and MAP test. And I chose to work with the students on extension. So an example of what we might do to extend, I don't know if there's any willingness for crowd participation, I hope, because I brought some my kids.
You can help to handle that.
Extension activity I did with my group on synonyms and antonyms. We found that there were some students that already knew synonym means same, antonym means opposite, and the words on the test that we were looking for, synonyms and antonyms, were way too basic. So I found this activity, and it's essentially a multiple choice sheet, but the QR scan makes it a little more exciting, and the engagement that we saw from the students was through the roof. They were super excited about it. The best part was, I gave them the sheet, I told them how to use it on the iPad, and that it would give them three choices for the correct answer, and then they had to write their answer in. Well, right away, they came up to me and said, what does this word mean? What does commence mean? And I said, you mean commence? Well, if I want you to find me a synonym, but I tell you what it means, I just gave you a synonym. So what's another magical place where I can find the meaning of words? Maybe they have something bound together that they just have those, and they, like a light bulb went off, the dictionary! Yes, go look in the dictionary. So they went. And then after discovering that a few times, they came up to me and said, Mrs. Holden, did you know in the dictionary, it lists synonyms after the word? And I was like, you know, it's almost as if I planned this, that you would find that out. So they were using the dictionary to find words that were a little more challenging to then take it to the next level and find the synonyms, or in some case, antonyms. And they were so into it, it was really lovely. So without teaming with Adam, I wouldn't have been able to do this because I wouldn't have had the time to focus in on the enrichment for the students that needed it. And so that's one story of how this has been effective for our students.
Did everybody try it?
Do you know how to do the code?
Oh, you have to open the QR code app.
Yeah, how do I do that?
Push on the app, press the app.
I got a problem for you.
Put it right over the...
Oh, there we go.
There's more where that came from. Our second team to present tonight, to share what they're doing in their PLC to change some of the instructional strategies, is our fifth grade team. And I'm going to just actually, Matt, will I have audio on this? If I play this.
We can set that up.
Okay.
My name is Brent Rauk. And so we had to make a shift this year because this is the first year in 12 or more that there are more than two people teaching math. Because this is the first year of Bridgewater's Companeros Program being one classroom, all of a sudden, we needed to decide how are we going to instruct in math. I used to partner with Sarah and Adam as one or the other would teach math, and the other would teach language arts. And Gail would partner with her Companeros teacher in teaching just math or just the language arts piece a part of the day. So all of a sudden, we were now put in a predicament or opportunity to, depends on how you look at it, shifter.
Careful, how you refer to me.
No, it's for both of us.
She's an opportunity.
Exactly. So we needed to figure out what we were going to do. And so what we decided to do was all four of us were going to teach math, which meant that our PLC really needed to gear towards those math goals versus Mrs. Anderson or myself just worrying about those things related to math and the instruction and all the aftermath that goes with that. So this is an example of our PLC after a post-test.
You can measure read points singles with the full...
Okay, so that's measuring, and then the other one we have just is...
We're not worrying about per p. Oh, that's her, she's...
Not as much, you know, because a lot of that is, there'll be other opportunities that keep coming up, control goals. And so after a post-test, we go through and, after a post-test, we go through and look at all the data, and then we figure out which groups and which skills need to be re-taught. And then we use that as an opportunity to use a recess or a lunch group to do that. So our shift, our shift was to build into student success, where it was just left to two people earlier, now we're looking at it for people that we can bounce ideas off of so that we can meet the needs based on the post-test results.
I would say, I'm Sarah Duchang. Gail and I, we teamed for language arts for the past four years, and we've seen some good results, and we push each other harder, and we're a better team that way. And so looking at the change this year with just the one Companeros class, we had the opportunity, I would say, to all come together. And Brent and Sarah, Miss Anderson, are very strong in the math. And so we really, the four of us together, are able to make a bigger difference. And then, so Miss Anderson this summer created a 10-question math pre-test for each unit. And it starts off easy, and it gets harder as it goes. And we all give the students about 25 to 30 minutes on that. And then we grade them and group them for the unit. And one of us has a smaller group, and we go a little bit slower. And then the middle group is about 27 or so kids, and then the higher group is right around 30, and they're able to go through the material faster. We still commonly pace within a couple days of each other, but then we're able to really meet the students' needs. And what you saw was the post-test, and then really looking at that again. So we're not really leaving any kid hanging out there. We actually know when they know it, and we know what to do when they've already demonstrated on the pre-test that they have that concept. So this summer, Gail and I were the two that worked on the scope and sequence for the fifth grade language arts. And that was phenomenal. It was a really hard process, and there was some learning to go into it, but we had really strong leadership with Hope and Nancy and Judy. And all of us would start the day together and figure out what our big ideas were for that day, and then we break up into our grade level teams. And Gail and I ended up creating a handful of these Google Forms. And this is just a quick pre-test. Our students took this about a week ago. This was on the point of view that passages are written in, first, second, third person. And our pretests are all on Google Forms so far, and they're anywhere from about six to 10 questions. And they're really kind of focused on vocabulary. What do the students know? And then our post-test, we take it more to the application level. Can they write some points of view, write in those different voices? So our students took these last week, as I said. We would like you to take them now, and we're going to show you what we can do with the data.
Hold on, I have to...
Oh, there's a map on there that says author viewpoints of what the spreadsheet looks like that we are able to see. And the kids in red have scored below, below 50. Yeah, proficient, well, 60, 60. But, so this is really powerful to, we're not grading them on what they know or don't know, but then this forms our instruction. Like I have a handful of kids that were already ready to take it to that application level. They could identify the points of view, and now they got to read quite tougher passages. I actually have a parent volunteer who does this with them, grateful for that. Grateful for that. And then the kids, what we look for is growth. And so, when we do this post-test next week, it will, the questions will change a little bit, and we will look for more. But, like, third person on the post-test will be divided up into limited, objective, and omniscient, just bringing it up to that level. But, we have seen good growth with these. And then, again, where a student doesn't make growth, we're able to reteach them, and pull them into that smaller group, and make sure they're not left with any holes. And actually, currently, Hope has a great volunteer who has been helping us really pinpoint skills for the kids who've met or partially met the standard. And so, they're being screened in fact and opinion and main idea and everything. So, we're, in addition to what we have for the whole class, we're really honing in on those kids.
And the neat thing about this is Kim Brisky introduced the whole concept of using Google Forms for formative assessments, and so, they don't have to grade this. It automatically happens in the forms, which is really nice. And color codes, and gives them some sorting capabilities.
And the five, three, four, one, two, those are, how many questions they got right? But, it'll, this spreads out much further, so for each question, we can see which kid. So, it isn't just, we have to go through all of authors' viewpoint. We can say, "These are the kids that don't understand third person. These are the kids that don't understand that." So, it gives you a lot more information than just a percentage, yeah.
We're still very much learning on how to write these questions, and what's a valid question and what's not. And we've already looked at a couple that we've done and said, "I don't really like the way that was worded. Maybe that's where we went wrong." But, when we're cranking out as many as we can in that weekend in July, there's some revisions that need to be made. And we also learned the hard way to have a backup, a copy of the file in our Google Docs, because one of my students didn't click View Live Form, and they edited and deleted half the test.
Oh, gee. My kids were halfway through the test, and they're like, "What's going on? The question's just going away."
So, we're learning, but that's okay. That's a part of it. And then, there's another, there's a page called Summary Data, which we can see how many students answered, you know, chose A, B, or C for each question. I think that this could be better. I think that if the passage was, well, this one actually looks pretty good. This is conflict. If the passage was right there, we could do more with the question, but that's kind of a Google Forms issue. But, we're learning, and we're happy to be learning this.
I think it was this page that let us know there was a question that we needed to change, just by the scoring. We're like, "Okay, something, there's a red flag here." And then, we re-looked at the question itself and changed it, so.
I think overall, we feel really proud of the work that we're doing. I think we're so unified as a PLC team, and we're so grateful that we have a vision, you know, we have people guiding us, and it's really a great year.
And the time.
The time to do it.
To do that.
Any questions on this? And that, those answers are a lot...
I just sent you my answers, Gail.
Do you want, do you want us to...
I just submitted mine.
Okay, good. Do we need an intervention?
I don't think so. You'll have to check my answers.
Intervention process, to not just always have fluency as our go-to. We said, "We can target interventions towards specific literacy skills that students need a little more reteaching in." So, that's been a shift for us as well.
So, our 2014-15 site objective number one, all students will demonstrate growth toward grade-level proficiency or above in reading and math as measured by the MCA in grades three through five, math in grades one through two, and the Northfield kindergarten academic center for kindergarten students. And our 2014-2015 Student Smart Achievement Goal, 80% of our students K5 will demonstrate mastery of literacy in math standards, as indicated by a score of 80% or higher on the quarterly common assessments in reading and math. And we just saw an example of some of those common formative assessments. And move over to Nancy.
I think I want to share one comment that the fifth grade team made when we were talking about their presentation today. One of the things they wanted to emphasize was, the work that they're doing right now, it doesn't happen by itself. And one of the big points that they made was, without our RTI coaches in our building, and without some of the extra support we have in our building, these things wouldn't happen. Having the time, having the time that it takes to develop the interventions, develop the extensions, all of that takes an enormous amount of time, and it doesn't happen just with one or two people. If you're looking at a self-entained classroom, to have the amount of time that it would take to get all this done on your own, there aren't enough hours in a day. And I, too, want to emphasize the fact that we have a whole team of people that are working to make this happen. And I really thank you for being willing to play along with us on being students today, but at the same time, I think it's important for you to see what our iPads have brought for our students as well. On our climate goals, on our first two goals, our first goal, I really wanted to emphasize the things that we're doing that are new this year, not kind of regurgitating all the things that you've heard in the past. And the same thing with our climate goals. Our goal is, was, and continues to be, that we want all students and staff to contribute to a respectful, safe, and welcoming environment. And that has not changed. If you look at our goals from this past year, again, we want good conference attendance. We had our, our goal was for 95% participation, and our conference attendance was at 92%. But, I want to speak to that just a moment. One of the things that we recognized was the fact that our reporting was done before our conferences were finished. And so, that was one of the practices that we have changed this year, in allowing the teachers that extra time to follow up with the parents that didn't show up for our parent teacher conferences, and have that specific conference with them, be it over the phone or be it in person. But, making sure that we touch base with every single parent. And so, that's why that goal was, our results were low, but that's what we're doing to make that change. Again, we want parents to be informed about their child's progress. We're working on our fix-it plans to reduce them. We did, we had a huge reduction in the number of fix-it plans that were received by students. We had a 35% reduction in fix-it plans. And so, you might think, "Oh, my goodness, did the students, did their behavior improve immensely?" Well, one change that we made last year was, we have teachers who are supervising the playground right now. And that, I would attribute to that big drop in fix-it plans. Teachers are able to address the situations as they happen, and it's not, sometimes that resolution is taking place without a fix-it plan. It's taken care of before it even starts. It doesn't get to that point. So, again, when I look at who's responsible for that, that the teachers are responsible for that grade reduction there. Again, we had a goal for our staff in their climate survey, and that was taken, that was replaced by the principal's survey from last year, but we're going to bring that back again this year and make sure that those goals are continued. So, again, for this year, our goals are remaining the same. Again, we want it so that 88% of our students or more will receive no more than one fix-it plan. We, I don't mind having a child have the opportunity for, to learn some skills, but at the same time, if more, if a greater number of students are receiving fix-it plans, that means something else is taking place. And again, I want to work on, continue working on the climate for staff, and again, making sure that parents, parents are seeing that their child's social and emotional needs are being met at school, along with their academic needs. A big thing that we're focusing on climate is really supporting each other. And you can see from the teams that presented tonight, that support for each other happens all the time. It's ongoing. It doesn't just happen at one special moment. You know, these things happen during, you know, grade-level planning times, during PLC times, in the middle of the day, at wacky times, and sometimes structured times. So, that, to me, that's really huge, supporting teachers so they can support students to make this whole process work. We want our students to be, we want our students to be number one happy, but we also want them to learn at their learning rate, not someone else's learning rate. So, that's what's happening at Bridgewater, and we would tell them about after questions.
Questions, bud members? Carrie?
I don't have a question, but I just, this was an excellent presentation, and I got to say, I understand formative assessments better than I ever have. I mean, we've been talking about this for forever, but to have these really specific examples of how they're being used, it was so helpful to me. So, thank you very much for that.
You're welcome. And one of the things that we talked about was, we really wanted our presentation to be a little more interactive, rather than, rather than us just speaking to you, but having you experience what students experience.
Well, I wrote that down before you started passing out the iPads, was that I felt like I was understanding formative assessments better than ever.
Super.
Other comments or questions? Julie?
I had a question. I had made some notes from last year. So, Hope, you had explained last year about how you were going to, this year, I think, go spring to spring, and that was the, so, doing that is a reason for that shift, but you sort of expected that, correct?
We did expect. I mean, when you go spring to spring, you're, the percentage of kids meeting their growth targets tends to be less than a fall to spring measurement. And that's okay, you know, we're going to take it, and we're going to go with that. But, we did anticipate a drop. I was still hoping we would hit that 50% mark, but, next year...
Well, I just wanted to point that out, because, you know, that was a big shift in terms of what you were doing. And so, I know you didn't really preface that, and you kind of said, "Well, we didn't," but, you know, there was, there's some reason there, and there was, you know, there was that intentional, you know, effort to do that, and with the knowledge that there would be some challenge there, so.
Now, next year, we will, we will go fall to fall for grades three through five, just to reduce some of the spring testing that our third through fifth graders face. So, for them, they will be going to fall to fall measurement. K2 will still be able to do fall, spring, and spring, spring, so.
Just, Hope, before you run off.
Yes.
Give them about the two-sentence piece for what is probably the most significant reason for why the number of students that are successful when you go spring, spring, or fall, fall, compared to fall, spring? What is happening in the word begins with a C?
Am I the only one in the dark here? No, what, the change in the students?
Really talking about what happens when you have a calendar?
Oh, yeah. I mean, we are not accounting for some, yes, we, and that, yes, we are, I wasn't going to calendar, I was going to summer loss, but, yeah, we...
Summer loss, okay. Use SL then.
Okay. When we, when we move to spring to spring, we do not then have a measurement for summer, summer loss in our students. And we have seen that, actually, in some cases. I'm really quite glad we're going to fall to fall, because sometimes we'll meet on kids, and if we are missing that fall data point, we often don't know how much was lost by that individual student over the summer. And for some of our kids, that is significant, so.
Fall, spring really gives you an artificial bump, doesn't it?
Or, well, or not, depending on your...
Because of the fact that if they've lost over the summer...
Yes.
And then, they gain it all back for the spring, you're probably going to see the biggest growth. When you do something that either goes fall, fall, or spring, spring, you take that out of the equation.
Exactly, exactly. Yep.
Other questions? Nope?
Excellent report. Very engaging. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question.
So, it's an enormous amount of work to do those formative assessments you were talking about, and I was so impressed with the Google Docs. I'm wondering, this might be a Mary Grace Hansen question, but I know the PLCs are just starting to look across all the elementaries, if, you know, what sort of opportunity, I mean, this huge amount of effort that you're all putting in, and it would be lovely to see if everybody's doing something to have that...
At our joint, at the joint PLC that we just had, we shared these with...
Oh, excellent.
With our fifth grade colleagues across the district, so.
Greenville Park just had Brisky in last week to, Greenville Park just had, Greenville Park just had Kim Brisky in last week to talk to them about how to use the Google Forms as well. We showed what we had, they had already created, and now, she has talked to them and showed them how that that can go forward.
And we also shared, we shared our scope and sequence with all of our RTI coaches, and we also shared the folder of the Google Docs, things that we've created.
That's fantastic.
Mary, you have to go to the mic, nobody will hear you.
I was just going to say that we did have one grade level, and that would be kindergarten, who had done this work across all three buildings this summer.
Right. And then, to expand on the kindergarten, a representative from each of the three elementaries met, boy, just a week and a half ago, and did district benchmarks for what they're looking for, for students who already noticed that they said kindergarten students will meet district benchmarks. That team decided that. Sibley will be working on some, just beginning the formative assessment piece, or continuing where they're at, but as a school, on Wednesday, as part of their building staff development. And then, next summer, we have two days set aside, June 11th and 12th, where all elementary classroom teachers can come in for two days, and we're going to concentrate on English Language Arts standards, and the formative assessments, and common assessments at that time. Thank you.
Well, that's just, I think it's really impressive, and I also appreciate how you modeled the sort of learner-centered engagement in your presentation. So, thank you so much. Very nice work.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy.
Thank you, and I'm just going to want to point out the fact that I really appreciate all the teachers taking their time to join us tonight. It's always better to have a team, so thank you so much.
Absolutely, yeah, thank you so much. You bet.
All right. Good evening. And I'm here, I have a few representatives from our site improvement team here with me, but I kind of gave them the break. I thought, "Well, this is my one chance to be interim principal, and so, I'm just going to speak." And a big sigh of relief came over us. I'm also noticing that I'm learning every day in my new role, and I just learned something tonight, never follow Bridgewater. Rookie state, be a little set up. Thanks, Nancy. So, but, we are here to talk about the middle school, and I will start by taking a little brief walk backwards into last year's site improvement team goals, and just give you a little bit of a brief look on how we did with our progress. And we had three goals. The first one was, that will demonstrate increased proficiency for each student in essential learning of content areas. This is directly tied to our PLC goal, PLCs. This is year three goal. It was completed, because we do have our weekly PLCs. And the key point to this one is that I've noticed, this is my 17th year here in Northfield, and as we started the PLC process, at least in the middle school, our PLC communities kind of had mixed content areas right off the bat. And it's kind of morphed as people have gotten the hang of, and kind of understood, and really started to believe in the process. And now, we've gotten to pretty much pure content area PLCs, and that's really been helpful, and it's really helped our all different areas reaching those essential ones. The second goal was providing increased opportunities for students to apply oral communication skills, to include expanding spring student-led conferences. This was also a year-two goal that was completed. Last year, we implemented the student-led conferences with our eighth grade. They did, we did a collaborative thing with our high school, where our eighth grade folks went to the high school, and they did a student-led conference talking about the Explore Test. And then, meeting with Mr. Lear to talk about this year. We noticed through some of the parent surveys that we did give out also during that process, that parents, even though the attendance is really high, and they like the program, they like the concept, they still are looking for maybe a different topic, a different avenue, maybe to discuss the Explore Test. That didn't seem to be the right fit or the right place. So, Mr. Lear and I are working on maybe a plan that we can do a better job with that. And the third goal for last year, will maintain a low school-wide disciplinary referral level, and begin to implement elements of positive behavior interventions and support. Also, a two-year goal that was completed, and this particular goal now will actually be moved forward, but more, it will be in the form of a PBIS goal, as we do a shift, and I'll talk about that in a little bit. Looking forward, things that we're very excited about at the middle school, our site improvement team met, we talked about several different areas and directions we could go. That process actually started at the end of last year. We brought it forward, and we looked at a few different areas, and we kind of landed on five different ones. Our first objective was, we wanted to provide time for our teachers to analyze summative and formative data, which will be used to differentiate their curriculum, and thank you Bridgewater for explaining that. So, that was very helpful. Why are we looking at that? Well, looking back at MCA data from... Well, looking back at MCA data from last year, it showed that the middle school scored 10.6% higher than the state average in math and 11% higher in reading. Not bad, but we want to continue to improve upon that. So, our achievement goal for this coming year, this current year, is that we want to increase that so that our students score 12% higher than the state average in math and 13% higher than the state average in reading. I should actually preface this at, a lot of the MCA goals, we had some discussion about setting those goals, and I felt it was really kind of important to analyze things with respect to the state. We have a couple factors moving in. One, with it still being online, online testing. There's technology things that we have no control over, but probably the most important piece is that there's a shift from the air testing system to Pearson. And we don't know what that'll look like, so that's kind of, I felt that whatever happens in either those two areas, it will affect the entire state. So, if we build our goals based on state averages, I'll be a little bit more accurate on where our students are at. Now, how are we gonna get there? First of all, continuing obviously with our PLCs. As I mentioned, really our PLCs are doing a nice job. I've seen every year that they seem to be getting better and better. They work a little bit more collaboratively now, and more specifically, now that they have their teams in solid disciplinary areas, they can use those formative and summative assessments to pick out students and really address the needs of students that was in the past, taken them a little bit longer to identify. So, and which means more time working with them, which in turn should help us reach our goals. The other thing is we have a new intervention at the middle school, the multi-tiered support system, or system of supports, MTSS, in both mathematics and reading. We also have it for behavior as well, but for this presentation, we'll do the math and reading. Our objective is to, our objective number two is, with our multi-tiered system of support, the coaches looked at math, or will look at math and MCA data to identify a group of students who they will support and create classroom interventions that will increase the student's academic success. They have already done this. In a minute here, I'll kind of give you some background information. Our coaches, I think it's very important to note that Dan Myers in mathematics, Leah Sand in reading, and Rachel Hudson with the behavior piece are three very strong individuals. They're working very hard. They're doing some fabulous work. They're really uncovering some things that really are gonna help us moving forward, not only this year, but in years to come. Our evidence, why we're looking at this? Well, the MCA data shows that 67.2% of middle school students were proficient in math and 68.2 in reading. Again, it's not that it's a poor score, but the more concerning piece of that is, is that our English-language learners, students that receive special education service and students receiving free reduced lunch, they score barely above or actually below state average. And that is probably our most concerning piece of this. Yes, we'd like to see those two top numbers increase, but really, the bottom part's not acceptable. That has to go up, and so that's really what we're striving for. The goal is, and I'll talk a little bit more about MTSS here in a minute, but 75% of the students that the coaches have identified, their goal is to move them up to show growth, whether that means from not being proficient to partially or partially to needs proficient. They just want to get those students moving in the right direction, build confidence so they feel good about themselves and they feel, they just have that vision that, yes, they can do it. Early concerns. As we got going, again, MTSS is new to us, so obviously, first year of any program, you learn some things. As Leah and Dan and Rachel explored all the data that I mentioned, they came up with a little over 100 students in all, if you combine sixth and seventh, eighth grade, that would actually meet their criteria. They did not meet MCA proficiency, and they were below grade level in math. They currently had to narrow that down, and they narrowed it down to 29 reading and 42 math students because they only have, which is the next slide, they only have one hour a day to kind of find a way to get to these students. And again, they're using their time very well, very efficiently. They're pulling students out of classes. They're helping their counterparts or colleagues in language arts and in mathematics to kind of do interventions in the classroom. So, they're doing what they can, but when we had the conversation, when they first came up with that 100-plus students, I talked to both of them. I said, "Hey, you gotta be realistic. Looking at 100-plus students, we want to do things well, so let's narrow it down. Let's really get to those students that you can really make a difference, that their schedule works, and that we're gonna really be able to show that this process is effective." Plan of action. This first part, as I mentioned, they did already create their focus groups. The next part is that they start, they have now been working, like I said, with the core classroom teachers as well as doing some pull-out and individual kind of booster lessons or, as you'd call it, just really addressing the skill deficits that some of those students have. And finally, that they will be tracking the progress through formative and summative assessments throughout the year. I see them on a regular basis, and so we can kind of keep on track and keep making adjustments as needed. Objective number three, we're gonna look, we will look at specific groups of students who have struggled in science in the past and work to improve their organizational skills, study habits, and build self-confidence through a specialized science program called GeoScience+ plus, which I will explain in a little bit. Reason being, 51.3% of last year's eighth graders scored as being proficient on the 2013-14 MCA science test. Having a math background and working in Northfield for this along, that 51.3% did not sit well with me, and I can honestly tell you, did not sit well with our eighth-grade science teachers either. Looking a little more carefully at the data, there's also over 30% of our students that partially met standards, so we're close, and there are some reasons for this number being a little bit low. First of all, MDE is not giving a whole lot of support. And I should mention that 51.3% is above state average, so it's not, even though the number seems low compared to the state, we're doing just fine. But MDE's not giving us any help. They're not, unlike math and reading, where they give us direction on what is going to be, what topics or what areas those subjects are gonna be tested, it's not so much the case in science. They kind of hand-pick some topics they may be in the test, other topics may not. So, it's a little bit of shooting in the dark on what it's gonna be. And the other piece is that this test is only in eighth grade. Unlike the math and reading, where you can get a sixth grade or fifth grade score, and you can start building on that as they get older, it's kind of a one-and-done. So, even though we have this data, we don't get to go back to those students that are now at the high school and kind of see what adjustments you can make. Plus, the test could very well be different. But our achievement goal is, for our eighth graders this year, to score 10% higher than the Minnesota average. That's about a four or 5% boost from what was last year. We thought that was pretty reasonable. And our plan for getting there is, we started a few years ago, our middle school youth center started doing help sessions on Wednesdays after school. So, they do GeoSci strictly eighth-grade help sessions. They have Carleton tutors. They have our Vistas, and our Promise fellows are after school, and a lot of our youth center students show up. They fill the whole science room a lot of times, and they kind of go over what they're covering in class to kind of give them that extra reteaching. And then we want to build up the success of our Geography Plus class by creating a GeoScience Plus class, which is what we did. The teachers of the two classes, our Geography Plus is Daryl Sawyer, and then Tammy McDonough teaches the GeoScience Plus. And then the eighth-grade GeoScience teachers, Craig Croon and Tammy McDonough, they've been analyzing the data. They're looking for anything. They're looking for any type of pattern or anything that they can pull from last year's test that kind of give our students the edge. Can they change the sequence of when they teach things? They found something, I believe it was astronomy, that there was like five questions on that, which made a big difference, and they hadn't covered that unit yet. So, it would have been as simple as just that they knew.
Absolutely.
And there are students who do not see themselves continuing with education beyond high school. They just can't envision that. It's not something that, if you talk to them about that, it's, they shrug their shoulders. It's just foreign to them. And so that's the group of students that we tried to kind of corral and see if we can kind of help them with this test and build those skills and build competence. We talked to the seventh-grade science teachers and got input from them because they know their students so well, as well as like looking at some data. What happens in a Plus class? Well, they, what they've done is, they look at the essential learnings for that class, for, in this case, science, and they boil it down to what exactly, what specifically, what absolutely do students need to know? And they all the little extras they kind of put in the back burner. And what that allows them to do is, it allows them to do these weekly seminars, and the seminars are phenomenal. They're just, they're just, it's exciting to see what happens is, and they've had to train students to do this. The students bring a question, something that they don't understand in any of their core, any of their subjects, and they bring it. They work in small groups to basically do problem solving. And it's directed by Carleton tutors or our Vistas or AmeriCorps people, or occasionally Tammy McDonough. I mean, fear her up from lunch, students go up there and do a little bit different supervision if they're short adults. And they walk them through a process, and the students get used to helping themselves and asking tough questions, and really that whole mindset of working through a problem starts to be ingrained and kind of gives them a new, almost like a revival. It's like, wow, I can do this if I spend some time. As well as, they teach them how to do Cornell notes, which is kind of a spin-off, and this is kind of, I think I mentioned Dr. Richardson, it's kind of a Northfield version of the Avid program, if you've heard of that. And they teach them that for organization. Students have to do that. That's what they do in the program. So, all students are, all of a sudden, wow, now I'm organized. I can find things. I know when things are due. As well as, they bring speakers in. The speakers talk about different careers, which kind of have different types of, or amounts of education beyond high school. Some very little and some more. And it really gets the students excited. Again, it gets them looking beyond high school, gets them to believe that, hey, man, I'm interested in that. That's something I maybe would like to pursue, and better yet, I think I can pursue. And that brings us to objective four. Provide the flexibility necessary for all secondary professional learning communities to set meaningful goals that reflect their area of teaching expertise. And this is kind of a carryover goal. Even though it sunsetted last year, we're gonna kind of move it forward, and again, it's to address the math and the reading and the science, the fact that they're the only subject areas that are truly tested by our state. So, it gives kind of those other subject areas permission to work on essential learnings. It gives them another, a focus beyond those three subject areas. The actual goal is that we will show an increase of proficiency for each student in essential learnings of all content areas. And our plan is, again, to be active members or actively participate, I should say, in our weekly PLCs, and then twice a year, our PLCs, as you all will know, they have to show their evidence of practice. And the final goal, we will continue to work on implementing a positive behavior intervention and support PBIS program with full implementation for the start of the 15, 16 school year. The middle school PBIS team will complete its two-year training to fully implement this district and state support program. The middle school PBIS team started as 12 people. We, as it says, will have our final training coming up here in the spring, and it's grown now, our team itself has grown into 17. And we don't bring all 17 to the trainings, but we meet pretty regularly every Wednesday after school. And we talk PBIS. We talk about what's the next step we need to do. And it's really built ahead of steam at the middle school. And our goal and plan, the goal is to fully implement PBIS into the climate at the middle school with 80% or greater support from all staff. And I'm gonna take a little bit of a bird walk and just kind of break this statement down. The 80% is not something that's just out of the blue. It's what PBIS and our training shows is that the 80%, schools that have 80% or more have really long and really strong sustainability of this program. As soon as you drop below the 80%, that really starts to waver. So, that was one of the reasons why I know, I hate the word, saying we're behind, like the ALC and high school, but we intentionally took it slow. We wanted to make sure that we were solid moving forward and had that 80%. And we have done that along the way. The other word to kind of pull out of this statement is the word "staff." I just want to make sure everyone knows that it's not licensed staff. It includes our educational assistants, our administrative assistants, our custodians, our cooks. Everyone that works in our building knows about PBIS. They see the posters. They see the things hanging up, and more importantly, they see the difference in our kids. The plan, for this year, we're gonna continue to add parts of PBIS through the school year with obviously the ultimate goal of full implementation next year. Some things we've done at the middle school, I call them accomplishments because it's no easy task to get, if you think of everyone, there's really over 100 people at the middle school that you have to get on board. So, that's not something that a small group can do in a short period of time. But some of the things we have done, we currently have both student and staff award programs. The staff one is changing. We had our last Rater Pride Award this week, and then after Thanksgiving, we'll be rolling out a new one. With the student award, we have a couple of them going on. We have a super-sub award that goes to students where our substitute teachers actually nominate one student from every class that they substitute in without telling the student, and they just kind of turn in a little sheet of paper with their name on, and then every other week, we do a drawing, and Subway has graciously donated six-inch subs, so we actually get the, they get the picture on the website, announcement on the news, and they get a free six-inch sub. The other program we have is Caught You in the Act. It's for students being caught doing things above and beyond. And all teachers know about it. They give it to it. The student, again, turns in their name. We do a drawing every other week, and McDonald's has, "I've been kind enough to donate the small prizes as well." Behavior matrix created and introduced to students. That's what this is. This is a matrix, and I'll actually pass it around. That's something, again, if you think about the number of people that are employed in our school, we got input from our educational assistants, from my food service, from our custodians, as well as our teaching staff, office people, and went through a process in creating this. And this is posted all throughout the middle school. And then new for this year, what we did is, we took one day, the staff chose one day at the beginning of the year, the first week of school, and every hour, every single class that had students talked about each one of those columns, so that by the end of the day, we had reached all, there's six columns actually. If you notice, before you sit down, Van. Along the left side, we have an acronym, and it's called PRIDE. And that was intentional, something else we came up with, we need an acronym. So, the word pride. So, it's our students at the middle school, and it goes on when I send out, when we send out a newsletter, it's always on there, and it's just across the building. And you ask students, "Hey, are you showing your pride today?" And it really dictates, you know, are our students prepared, are they respectful, are they showing integrity? prepared, are they respectful, are they showing integrity, are they dependable, or are they and are they showing excellence? And those are things that we just want ingrained in our in our students. They're just kind of like core values. Thank you. Along with the matrix, those matrices that I mentioned are posted. And then I just brought a couple of the example. These are basics posters. And again, we had to, it's the whole staff. It's not something our team did, our twelve. It's the something that our whole larger staff of closer to 80 or 100 people had input in. And we created these posters. It's kind of the snapshot, a very quick version of what's expected in all the different areas of our building. And these are also posted. The next step, a little bit of a bird walk with this, is next year now with full implementation, you actually teach lessons to students about these basics and as well as about the matrix. And then you use the data that you receive from different minors or major offenses that go on your building, and you kind of target those areas with different updated or booster lessons. So that's kind of the path that we're on. And again, I just brought a few of those for you to see. I did an extra booster lesson this year, thanks to our sixth grade teams who asked me, hey, Mr. Joe, would you just come visit our sixth graders and maybe revisit the matrix? No real reason, they just thought it was important to kind of do it, plus introduce me as the new principal. They're sixth graders. They didn't know who I was. I'm like the seventh, eighth graders. So I said, great idea. So I did. It was absolutely amazing to me. I pointed out, and I would just give them quizzes, and they could rattle off the matrix. They knew what pride meant. They knew what I was talking about. Some kind sixth grade boys really fed into my presentation the day before when I caught them making a mess in the bathroom. And we got to talk about the bathroom basics, and they I asked them where didn't what skills were you not showing, or what things were you not showing us? And they could point to the sign, oh, I didn't do this. And well, yeah, we didn't do this. And so it was fabulous. Staff, another thing that we've done is, and we actually this Wednesday will roll it out, the official copy, is we had to go through, and part of this is creating and having to agree on a staff of what is a major behavior and what's a minor behavior. And we've done And in general, we've kind of created, we have created, not kind of, we have created a much more positive school climate. I cannot tell you, matter of fact, I think it's rare that I go through a single day without being stopped by a parent, emailed by a parent, a phone call, or a staff member coming up to me and saying just how welcoming and how positive the atmosphere is at the middle school right from the time they walk in the door. And, you know, that just is encouraging. It should be encouraging to all of our staff. And I let them know that that that's what's happening. We have staff members that come up and say, hey, I was out at a baseball game or soccer game, and hey, parents are coming up and they're saying these things. So it's getting noticed, it's making a difference. And because of that, we see our future as being our our future is exciting, and our best work is yet to come. And we truly believe that, and we mean that, that we are excited about the school year, and we're excited about the future. So thank you for your time. And if people have questions, I will answer.
Thank you.
Anne? I really enjoyed your presentation, especially because I could see how all these parts are coming together. And I think you've really succeeded at all the pieces of middle school life being together and with the PBIS and everything. It looks like it's on a really great track.
Thank you. It is. It all has to be, it does have to be connected. I think that's an important piece when you're looking at that.
Julie?
Well, I had I had a couple of questions. And one is sort of a broad question just about about middle school in that, you know, we talked about differentiated learning and how important it is to meet students where they're at. But it seems to me to be a challenge at the middle school because you've got elementary school, and we've got flexible learning groups. And you saw how Bridgewater is just able to to make that work so effectively as well as our other elementaries. And then at the high school, you have ninth grade academy and Torch, and then you've got AP, and then you've got middle school. So by addressing things like geography plus and geoscience plus, you know, is really, and then you still have the structured study hall, I'm assuming that that program. But it seems to me there's it's just much more difficult to try to make that work the way the middle school, you know, just the way, you know, the structure of the middle school and try to differentiate. And I know there's a lot of teachers that are doing that within their classrooms, particularly with the help of iPads that has become much, much easier to make happen. But it seems to me like it's still a big, much more of an opportunity for the middle school and a challenge really to make that, you know, to differentiate that learning.
It is. And actually, I had this conversation with one of our seventh grade teachers about a week ago. A few years ago, we we spent a lot of time trying to identify students that need these supports. And we got to the end of that, and we had this nice list of students, but we didn't have any supports. And so we've kind of, and that was the question is, hey, whatever happened to that? We had this great process. And I said, well, the problem is we kind of went about it backwards. We learned from it. And so we've kind of backed up now. And we're putting things like the geoscience PLUS class in place. We have our WILL program, which assists and supports our seventh and eighth grade students. There's things that our student support staff is running, and they're meeting with kids and working on academics and goal setting regularly. So there's there's other things that are going on in our building. So we have those supports. There really is, you look at PBIS, we spent a lot of time on that tier one group, which is the nice fancy posters and the awards. It's all the fun stuff. And that meets 80-plus percent of our students. But it's really that next level, that tier two, that has about that 15%, that those are the places where you need to have those interventions. And that's the MTSS falls in that category. And that's really what we're trying to focus on and get in place. So we have some place for those students that need the supports. And so I think we're on the right track now. We're getting those in place. And actually, Wednesday, we have a presentation, Rachel Hudson and some other people are doing to make sure our staff know the process and the steps going forward as well.
Absolutely. And you have, you know, Leah Sands and Dan Myers and Rachel Hudson, you know, three really, really great people leading that. So that's really great. Then I have one other question. Can you talk about the how it worked to have the sixth graders get the iPad later than, you know, that that new move or the the process you did this year versus last year with the iPad?
Sure.
How you felt that worked?
Let's just say I we're not interested in going back. It went it went very, very well, probably beyond all expectations. And there's kind of two parts to that. We really felt strongly that sixth graders coming in had enough on their plate to start the year. The transition to middle school is hard enough, and you throw something like an iPad at them, it's kind of sensory overload. And so intentionally said, we're gonna we're gonna hold off on that a little bit. The second piece of that is that John Beatty and Rafa Estrella, our art teachers, also incorporate technology. And they started teaching sixth grade students prior to them getting the iPad, a little bit about the iPad. And then when they got the iPad, they started doing, they had a they had plenty of time for their art, but they started teaching them how to be responsible with it, how to access things, how to use notability, how to use Google. And so by the what was really different besides the waiting was students, when they they received their iPad, as they were getting a little hands-on training, instead of just having a class of 30-some students for 50 minutes, it made it a little more difficult without taking time away from curriculum. And that has made a huge difference. I talked to the sixth grade staff, and actually, even our seventh and eighth grade staff are jealous that it's like, why don't we have this? And so we're talking about how we can incorporate that for next year, for even seventh and eighth grade. But that's really made a huge difference. And I think it's set our sixth graders up for more success.
Great. Good to hear. Thank you. Other questions?
Two pieces. I just want to share that I had a chance to visit the geo the geog- geography plus class during a seminar day about three weeks ago. And it is awesome. I mean, it is truly amazing. You have these, you know, volunteers at each table, the way that each student frames their question, the way that they problem solve with each other. It is frankly amazing. And you can hear about it, but until you're sitting there and feeling the energy from those students and they are so because it's not just the student who has the question who is learning. It's everyone else at that table. Because guess what? Several other students at those tables had the same question. And I know Darryl and Tammy really worked hard. It's a pretty innovative strategy, and I just I can't say enough about it. Until you see it in person, it's pretty amazing. The other piece is I really appreciate the PBIS component because I was heading up, I think it was that same day, I was heading up those stairs to the second floor and had a chance to observe what I'm guessing was a seventh grade student launching a paper airplane off the top of the stairs there. And I had because there are those matrices in the hallway, I just he doesn't know me from Adam. And I said, was that really respectful behavior to the students below? And he knew exactly what he said. He was sorry. We moved on. And, you know, he probably doesn't know. But I think that enables everyone in the building, custodians, child nutrition people, everyone, to be a caring adult in those those students' lives, where before, people might have just walked by with it, or maybe shared it with Greg. But with those matrices, people are able to take care of it right there and then. And it's not a big deal. But I just I think those are examples of an outsider coming into the building and seeing those things in action. And it's pretty impressive. So good work.
I should also say Tammy and Darryl invite anyone to visit their classroom during seminars. Tammy does hers, the science one is on Tuesdays during her second hour class, and Darryl does it fourth hours on Thursdays. They just have to call in advance because every now and then they do skip a seminar if they have something that's more pressing. But for the most part, it is every week. So you're welcome to come at any time. You're also welcome to help if you want.
They didn't ask me to help.
I would echo that. I think it's really exciting what you're doing with the the science. And I think it's a really positive stance to look at the result and be really frustrated with MDE, and then just say, well, this is what we can do, you know? And I think it's really exciting that and to have Matt characterize it is this sort of deep learning rather than thinking about, okay, well, we we can shift the astronomy unit earlier because that's testing these pieces. But I really like that approach. And I think that's that's really exciting.
I had one just really nitty question on the we get the state improvement plans. And I didn't know what it meant by, I can tell you, does that page numbers? It's objective number two. It talks about career and technical education partners meeting on January 27th of this past year. And was that was the ninth grade staff and you were talking about how you did this, but I didn't know what the career and.
Is that from last year's goals or?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I'm not I'm not 100% sure on what that's referring to, but it very well could be referring to, I know they had some career material out there during the student led conferences in eighth grade as well. They had a presentation there, and there's a lot going on with that. I was I was actually giving conferences at that time, so I didn't.
And I think it probably came out of the, if you remember, we had the session in the morning here at the high school.
That's weird if it was the same thing.
We pulled people together and said, you know, we really want to think about how we can partner with our business community and take a look at those pieces. We followed that up with the present, or the session out at College City, where we brought folks in from the chamber and talked about it, brought in Ned Parker. And again, those really began to hatch then, kind of the next elements, which we're seeing probably more at the high school level in terms of the kickoff of not only the mechatronics piece, but also now moving toward a second piece that will probably look at the strategy for a health academy. And so there's just pieces now that are beginning to roll out of that. And the whole issue there is that as part of that, we're again continuing to look at how do we best do and use the results of explore and other testing to help kids think about the kinds of course offerings they want to take.
Yep.
And Greg talked a little bit about the fact that, you know, parents struggle a little bit with with the way we approached it, you know, last year with the idea that parents came into it again, wanting wanting to have somebody talk about their child and their child's progress short term. How is my child doing today? And as part of the explore, they're really taking a look at what are the things you need to think about for the next four years. We actually did a little brainstorming today about some strategies we may look at using this spring to really think about how to play that piece a little bit differently, but to make sure that parents understand the importance of the explore because it really is probably one of the most powerful tests for giving kids a sense of the kinds of careers, the kinds of programming that they might be interested in doing going forward.
Yep.
Great.
I just would reinforce one other thing that Greg talked about, and which I think is really novel and a really good approach. And that is, he shared the concept of looking at setting the goals in terms of science based on looking at a percentage higher than the state average. And if you think about over the last several years, how many times we've struggled because they changed the test on us, and then we came back and got the assessment in the next fall, and you're going, you know, how come those scores are going down in reading or mathematics? And I think the middle school's come up with kind of a novel strategy of saying, if they're going to change the test, the belief will be everybody's scores will come down. We want to make sure our scores stay a significant percentage higher than the state level. And by doing it in the way that I think that Greg and his staff are doing it, I think they've got a really good opportunity to continue to work forward and really gauge it against how the state in general is doing. So much appreciated.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
And thanks to your team, your silent majority back there.
I asked if they wanted to talk.
All right. We are ready to move on to our next item, which is the fiscal year 2014 audit report. And I believe Craig is here to present.
A partner at Clifton Larson Allen, who's the firm that we've used over the last several years to conduct our annual audits. And I think you're going to be very pleased with what Craig has to say. As you know, we've had what I think are really considered extremely clean audits in the business over the last years, and this year might be the cleanest. So really good stuff. And we look forward to hearing what not maybe not as exciting as the last couple, but really just as exciting for those of us in the district office because it's important that we have those good controls in place. So Craig, no pressure.
Yeah, no pressure, right? Well, I already know, you know, as far as style, I mean, the previous two sessions presentations were interactive, and they had iPads, and it was cool. And you'll be comforted to know my presentation tonight is pretty much the same as it's been for about four years now. So we have completed the audit. We've issued our report. We met a couple of weeks ago or so, kind of as a smaller group with a few of the board members, went through the financials and the findings and the results in quite a bit of detail. So I won't drill into it nearly as deep as we did a couple weeks ago. But high points of the audit, we issued a clean audit report on the financial statements. So we believe the the numbers and the disclosures in the financials are correctly stated in accordance with accounting principles to the best of our knowledge. The findings we have is a pretty short list. I think this is the shortest list list that I've seen in a while. First of all, no findings on internal control over financial reporting. In the area of federal program compliance, we tested three programs this year, special education, child nutrition, and Title I. We had no findings in those three areas for federal program compliance. That's a good achievement. We had four, what I'll call kind of housekeeping items, in the area of what's called Minnesota legal compliance. It's basically a set of kind of a summarization of state statutes that are pertinent pertinent to financial management. It's published and updated each year by the state auditor's office. And we had a couple on the district financial statements, actually one, excuse me, for timely payment of bills. So basically, with a district, a operation the size of this district, your invoices need to be paid within 35 days of receipt. Or when you have multiple departments receiving invoices from all over the district, sometimes it takes a while for them to get to the district office to be paid. So we had a couple that were late. This was out of a sample of 40. So a housekeeping item that kind of emphasized, you know, when invoices are received, goods are received, get the paperwork into the business office as soon as possible. We had a couple on the student activity funds. Basically, one, just looking for controls like a student sign off on a on an invoice. So that was a couple instances there where we were missing the student sign off. And then we looked at five activity funds to see, you know, from a paperwork standpoint. And then we looked at five activity funds to see, you know, from a paperwork standpoint, is there a statement of purpose on file for those activity funds? Of the five we looked at, none of those had that paperwork. So that's something kind of as a housekeeping item to follow on in the coming year. From the results, financial results, we always, of course, spend a lot of time looking at the general fund. That's where the operations of the district are, the vast majority of the operations, vast majority of the educating of kids occurs through the general fund. So in total, general fund revenues were right at $42 million for the year with expenditures of about $41.6 million. Basically expenditures were level with the prior year, added about $400,000 to fund balance in the general fund during the 13, 14 year. This slide, what we're doing is kind of closing the loop on a story that's been ongoing now for five years running. And that is kind of the rate of payout of district entitlement funds by the state as of June 30th. So in 2014, we're back to basically a 90% payout of the entitlement dollars for the year being in the district's bank account. That has not been the case for the four years prior. So with the full backup state funds that, you know, we've talked about that in previous meetings, all the districts in the state went through that. That's kind of all run its course. We're kind of back to where we were five years ago, having about 90% of the entitlement in the bank account. What this slide illustrates is kind of the trending of cash balance and receivable balance as well as fund balance. And what we've learned in the last five years is that, one, the importance of having a strong fund balance. Two, that having a strong fund balance does not mean you have cash in the bank. So that's kind of the lesson learned there. Keep yourself in a healthy position allows you to weather that storm much more easily. So what we're looking at here is kind of a component of general fund fund balance. This is the operating capital fund balance. It's one of the restricted areas, restricted use areas of general fund dollars. And again, we were setting a sizable or at least a higher number. In 2012, we've used some of that, the decline from 12 to 14. The high school gymnasium was one. From 13 to 14 was a security upgrade for entryway controls into the buildings of the district. And this is another area where having a strong fund balance or having those reserves allows you to, to do some projects that are maybe off plan, but in the best interest of the district, in the best interest of the safety of the students to tighten up controls as far as access points into, into the building. So that, that was done between 13 and 14. And the goal is, you know, going forward, try to build this element of fund balance back to about $600,000 in reserves. We've talked about over the last few years at each presentation, this element or concept of tax shift. And again, that's kind of more the pullback or holdback of dollars at the state during different cycles or different points in time of the cycle of recession to bottoming out to now coming back to a better financial health. The tax shift kind of changes a couple slices of the pie here. I'm not going to dwell on that necessarily, the size of the pie. But what this illustrates is kind of the general fund revenue sources, kind of the sources of revenue for the general fund in 2014. And between, one thing it does illustrate is that the district, of course, is very heavily dependent on state funding, about 82%. If you look at, the next slide will be 2013, just kind of as a comparison. But what I want you to pay attention to is the state sources, about 81%. The property tax, local property tax is about 12% in 2014. The combination of two is about 93%, right? And kind of ignoring the smoke and mirrors of the effect of the tax shifter, is it being held back, is it being paid back? In 2013, the size of that pie, state sources and property taxes still holding steady at about 93%. And then what I'll, the next couple of slides show kind of a breakdown of now the expenditure side of the general fund. Where are the dollars going? And about 81% of the funds coming into the general fund are being put towards instruction and support. So this is special education, instruction, vocational education, and regular instruction. So about 80%, a little over, about 81% going back into the classroom. And in 2013, about the same ratio, right at about 80%. So, I guess those are my prepared remarks. I would, of course, be open to questions if there are any.
Question? No comment?
Craig, I think just again to frame the two slides that showed revenue in the, in the slide for 2013 versus 2014, the biggest change that really occurred there was the final elimination of the property tax shift, correct?
That is correct. That's about $4.3 million.
We had, we had a much larger portion that was basically money that the state was continuing to hold back and pay the following year. And now we're back down to where, again, we're at the original number of 90, approximately 90%, 10%, 90% of our state aid coming to us in the year it's due and 10% coming to us in the next year. So that's a good position and it really does show the impact in the, the comparison of cash balance on assigned fund balance and state receivable of the fact that we have more cash that actually backs up the fund balance than we've had in the past. But the actual fund balances is not that much difference in terms of the fund balance.
Right. The actual fund balance is very stable.
It's backed up by cash instead of being an IOU from the state.
That's correct.
Craig, as I was asked, in terms of those findings, those very what you call housekeeping items, when you think about a lot of the school districts that you audit, these are very minor findings.
These are, that's exactly right. I mean, these are kind of housekeeping items. I, I don't consider these to be severe in any means. Again, going back to clean controls over financial reporting, that's where you want a lot of your attention focused, you know, sizable number of dollars coming through the district, around $40 million or so. And also on federal program compliance to have clean results there.
That's pretty huge. And I asked that question because I knew the answer already because Dr. Richardson is telling me, don't ask questions, you don't have the answers to. This is really a testament to our finance director Val Murstorf, who we now have a new Murstorf, Eliza was born a week or so ago, and so that's exciting. But Val has done such a fantastic job of ensuring that we are following very strict protocols. In fact, in her absence, we have this piece around some students not signing the student activity. Every week, we are actually reviewing every single purchase order that has gone through. And if it's a student activity, it's highlighted and we're making sure that the signature's there. And if it's not, then we're sending it back. So even though these are pretty minimal findings, it just goes to show Val's attention to the detail. And if you think about how lean our finance office is in comparison to the amount of dollars that we spend on an annual basis, it is pretty remarkable what they do in relative obscurity. They only get noticed when there's a mistake, which is really unfortunate because they do great work every day. And that's why we have a clean report.
Yes. We want them to be transparent, but in this case, we'd like to recognize the work that they do.
Exactly.
I don't know about relative obscurity. I think your department has, might have a different, different perspective on that. Really, Val, really? Right? That's kind of the perspective you want to have.
I want to thank you, Craig, for coming in and just echo what Matt has been saying. And, you know, having sat in on the audit, it's just, I think we're so lucky to have Val and the team behind her because it's really impressive to have this clean of an audit. And then just being able to talk through how it's presented to the community is, it's nice and it's impressive. And I also wanted to touch on the piece that it's really nice to be able to see what it, what it means to have our, our funding, our cash versus having to wait for the state. So I think maybe this will be the last year that we have to look at this anymore. And going forward, we can just think about 90 times, so.
It makes it a lot easier.
We'd just like to have some interest be paid on that cash.
Right, right.
But that's not happening yet.
It makes it a lot easier to comply with that 35 day requirement, if you'd like.
Yes, exactly. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So I wanted to remind board members that our next item, rather than having our next item for discussion, I would like, I had asked to move up in the agenda, the fiscal year 2014 audit item for individual action, since we just had the presentation on that. And you'll see that the superintendent's recommendation is to accept the 2013, 2014 audit report as it was presented.
Move.
Moved by Noel?
Second.
Seconded by Carrie. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor of approving the audit report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Audit report is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We are ready to move on to our third item for discussion report then, which is the guiding principles for reviewing late start options. And I wanted to explain to board members why this is showing up on your agenda again. I know we talked at length earlier in the month. Two, two pieces, really when Dr. Rich and I were talking about the agenda, he had mentioned that he was going to be going out to the conference and would have an opportunity to check in. So he had some more information to share that we didn't have at the last meeting. And then the other piece, that when we were talking about what he had heard from board members, we had this really meaty exploratory and rich discussion. And capturing it into a kind of a coherent set of guiding principles to move into next steps is really proving difficult. So I think, I really appreciated, you know, our meaty exploratory discussion, but I think having now had some time to think about what we have and considering it and then looking at, I had asked Dr. Richardson to kind of capture what he thinks he heard from board members, so we could kind of look at what, what does that mean? So I think maybe first, starting with what you have to share.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you very much. Yes, obviously in terms of looking at this piece, I want to make sure as we determine next steps, that I am clear in terms of really the focus and direction that the board is hoping to take on this particular later start option. And to do that, as Evan said, I did do some exploration with the Big Nine Conference to kind of see where they are in terms of start and end times. Danita was kind enough along with Tom Groutmann to put together some data around what happens if we would be looking at dismissing school an hour or so later than we currently are doing, especially at the secondary level. And then I have some, just some feedback from the Big Nine Conference superintendents just as to where they are in that process. But what I also want to do is, is again, kind of take a look at, I have 17 items here that I've kind of identified as potential guiding principles. And I guess what I would like to do is to, to kind of share those and have you think about them. And then I, I really need, as I'm going to move forward and working with the cabinet and with others on this, I'd like to get some sense as to, are these on track? Are there some showstoppers here? Are there some things that you would say, if you go in this direction, I'm really not interested in taking it farther? Are there, are there some things that we need to gather more data about? Because again, you know, we, there are multiple other steps we could take beyond this in terms of actually generating potential start and end times, taking a look at options for how that would play out. And I'm just a little concerned about doing that until I really get a better handle in terms of where the board would like to go. So if you would kind of think as I'm going through these and, you know, if you want to take notes or whatever as we're kind of going through this list, and then we, we need to have kind of round two of the rich and deep discussion to kind of talk about where people are. Okay? All right. So again, I identified with the help of the cabinet last week, kind of thinking about what are the guiding principles that should be there? And I've identified them as to whether there are things that impact elementary or secondary or elementary and secondary together in terms of the district. The first one really is about aligning the school day with medical research. That's obviously what we heard from Dr. Hoff, his information about adolescent sleep patterns and really the focus coming back that for students in adolescence, so basically with middle school and high school students, that trying to move the start of the school time back would potentially have a positive impact on adolescents getting enough sleep, being more tuned in and ready to go when they got to school, reducing the level of kind of the first hour fog when oftentimes students are not really as tuned in as we hope they would be. And, and taking a look at the fact that that really is a piece that is, it's not perfectly set based on grade, on the grade level as much as it is on when those students reach puberty. The second piece in terms of a principle that I heard was just the concept of a proposal to look at later start and later end times for secondary. As you know, right now, we start school at 7:51 in the morning and we're done at 3:40, or excuse me, 2:45 approximately. Middle school, just a couple of minutes later start, couple of minutes later ending. And then our elementary buildings, starting somewhere between 8:10 and 8:15 and getting out somewhere between 3:10 and 3:15 in the afternoon. So the idea being that the proposal that you received from Dr. Hoff was a proposal saying, think about the concept of pushing everything back. So having, having the secondary starting at that 8:30 to 8:40 timeframe would mean that we're looking at some time between 8:55 and 9:10 or 9:15 for the start of the elementary program. The next piece I think that needs to be looked at is the concept of increased missed class time for away contests. And on the backside of that first sheet that you have, you have information that again, Tom and Danita put together, which just takes a look at, if we were looking at a end time for the high school, not at the current 2:45, but at something approximate, approximating 3:20 to 3:30, then that means that seventh hour, basically, every time we have an activity where students need to leave school early to go to away activities or whatever, we're going to have students and potentially teachers and coaches having to leave with them. When we take a look at a year and basically what Tom used to give us the initial data is he used the data from the spring of last year and the fall and winter of this year to come up with a full year set of data. But you can see the number of events that occur that would, would have kids leaving school during the middle of their seventh hour classes. So we have 133 events over the course of a year. The number of days that are affected because of understanding that there are going to be multiple events that would occur on the same day where students are going to be away from the building, 62 days out of the 174 days of school that we have. The duplicated count of student athletes that would be impacted over the course of the year. the year would be 377 kids. And again, with the idea that multiple times you're going to have kids out at various times for activity. And a duplicated count of teacher-coaches at 162. So the, kind of the bottom line in terms of that piece is, we're thinking about a concept that says we move the secondary back in terms of starting approximately 45 minutes to an hour later, and that means we move the end time for the day back 45 minutes to an hour, that we're going to have a significant number of times during the year when kids are going to leave seventh-hour class or miss seventh-hour class altogether. And at the same time, their coaches will also be leaving with them. And remember, that's not only coaches that are at the high school, but it would also mean coaches that are at other buildings who would need to go with those students when they left.
Can I?
Sure.
Ask a question at this point?
Absolutely.
Is the point here that if we leave things as they are, these numbers are zero?
Is that, anything that is, I understand here, that typically would have had kids have to leave, if kids were having to leave any time after 2:40 in the afternoon, they would not miss any school. So there are other events we have, like golf, some other track meets, whatever, where we have kids that are leaving a lot earlier in the day. So that doesn't make it a zero, zero number of student activities where kids are going to leave school. But these, as I understand from Tom, are above and beyond or would occur only if we had a dismissal sometime between 2:40 and 3:40 in the afternoon, which would be currently as school was out and now would be school is in session. Does that make sense, Tom?
So, just to, again, make sure I understand what you're saying, is that these are the dismissals, these are the people who would have to leave early, only if we move the start time after, or the end time after 2:40?
Right.
That there are still people who are leaving?
There are still people that are currently now leaving before 2:45 in the afternoon for some activities. But you would gain a significantly larger number of activities where athletes and coaches would have to leave than you currently have.
So it's an additional 133 events over the events that are already
133 events over 62 days.
Requiring early dismissal for some students and faculty.
Correct. The next piece is thinking about alignment of the school day with other Big Nine Conference or similar schools. And so when I talked to the Big Nine Conference, I said, let's talk about what your current bell schedule is, what your student contact time is, both at the high school and middle school level. And what you'll see is they're all over the place. You have Red Wing in Rochester that start at 7:40 in the morning, actually start before we do. You have Winona that starts at 9 o'clock in the morning. And you see end times all the way from Red Wing that is done at 2:15 in the afternoon to Winona that ends up at 3:30. And a lot of it has to do with how much student contact time they have. And you'll notice that the student contact time ranges from a low of 6 hours and 30 minutes to a high of 7 hours and 23 minutes. And you can see how that plays out against also at the middle school, a similar kind of variation in terms of the number of minutes that students are actually in school. The other piece that is, as part of that, is just taking a look at, you know, where are the other Big Nine schools in terms of discussing later time? Because they've all seen the press, they've all received information about this, they've seen the University of Minnesota study, a Harvard study that just came out recently, several other pieces where they've talked about later start times. The list below of the people I was able to contact in terms of districts, you can kind of see where they are. You're seeing Albert Lee that is saying they may consider it, they're looking at busing quotes, because they're thinking that if they did it, they would want to do a flip-flop and put elementary earlier, secondary later. High school at Austin is also, they're considering the possibility of later start, but it's part of a bigger calendar work group review. And if you remember, Austin is one of the districts that has the year-round, at least one building that's involved in year-round school, not the high school, however. So they're really looking at it as part of a bigger calendar work group issue. Faribault, which currently starts at 8:15, is not looking at making any change. Mankato actually reviewed it because they had a group of folks in Mankato that said, gee, you really ought to look at this, here's the medical data, et cetera. And they determined with an 8:15 start, they were not interested in making any change. Northfield, obviously, we've listened to an initial citizen presentation. Owatonna really has not talked about either running earlier or later, but they are concerned about the length of their day. At 6 hours and 30 minutes, they have the shortest day in the conference in terms of the number of minutes. And if you think about it, typically, if you subtract from that 25 minutes for lunch, now you have a 6-hour and 5-minute day in Owatonna, where we basically have a 6-hour and 30, 40-minute day. Okay. In terms of Red Wing, I was not able to get to anybody with Red Wing to talk about what they were doing. Rochester's indicated that they're considering it, but again, it would have to be as part of contemplated busing changes, because they are really saying, if we're going to do it, we would want to flip-flop elementary and secondary, get elementary to start early, get secondary to start later. And Winona basically is not looking at making any change at all at 6 hours and 30 minutes. And a lot there, my belief is, is that the terrain and the hills and whatever make it more difficult. They, I think, probably have chosen to start late just based on the difficulty during a chunk of the winter of getting buses and cars and everybody else just to the high school or to any of the buildings to get started. So that basically is information there. And then the last chart on the back is one you should remember from when you're looking at calendars. And this is just looking at some of the other districts. And again, you'll notice that, you know, the range of districts runs, again, from about 6 hours and 55 minutes, or maybe up to 7 hours in one case, down to about 6 hours and 10 minutes in some buildings in the, in the school districts that are listed. And again, there's a variety of number of school days there. So if you look at, you know, where we are at 174 school days, you're going to see that there are districts with 171 or even as few as 168 days of school and others with as many as 174, like we are at Owatonna at 176 days. So that gives you kind of a sense of, if I was to say, gee, we should align with the Big Nine Conference, you'd say, what? What kind of alignment? And it is just simply because it's all over the place. The next piece that I think we would have to take a look at is thinking about later start times for community use of facilities. And that impacts both elementary and secondary. So if what we're looking at is pushing the time out of the building back approximately an hour, now the situation that we have is if the community wants to use the facility, now instead of starting at the time that they're starting, now are we looking at basically needing to push all the start times back and maybe keeping the building open an hour later in the evening? So right now, we try typically to get buildings closed down, err, in about
About 10 o'clock.
About 10 o'clock, whether we'd have to actually look at pushing that time back. The same, the same piece is, how does that impact community groups? So, in other words, programs like NBA or volleyball or other groups that are using the facility after we get done with practice, what does that mean for their time as opposed as we already would have our practices being later in the evening because we couldn't start until everybody was out of school? Then the trickle effect of that or the domino effect of that is, if you move the start and the practices back, you move when students can get to the use of buildings, et cetera, now you have a situation where, what does that do to family activity? And what does that do to kids getting homework done? Because now that tend to push those pieces back. And then finally, the, kind of the last piece that we have to take a look at is the start and end times for elementary, because right now, the only proposal you have on the table says everything moves back. So secondary moves back, you know, to somewhere between 8:30 and 8:00. Because of the fact that So parents who have now been able typically to take their skid, kid's skid, take their child or have their child get on a bus before 8 o'clock and get to school, now the buses would not be coming until about the time that parents would need to be out the door and at work. And if the parent worked anywhere but right here, if they live, work in the cities or whatever, they are definitely going to have to deal with that morning activity and having to address that piece. So I think we want to think about parent responsibility there and what the willingness is and knowing that we have parents that drop their children off. And sometimes we have parents that drop their children off early to get to work. And because at least we're starting fairly soon after 8 o'clock for elementary, kids are able to get, hit the playground, to be able to, to be able to have a supervised space to be even before 8 o'clock in the morning. It's also, I think, important to kind of think about, is, would moving this direction signal a willingness on the part of the board to consider allowing practices or remedial enrichment programs to be held before school started in the morning? Because as soon as we start to see practices get pushed back, it is very likely that there will be some individuals that will say, well, why can't we just go ahead and practice in the morning? Or can we do remedial programs for students in the morning? Or can we do enrichment programs for students in the morning? Which to some extent will undo the impact of a later start. Another piece I want you to think about is, is there willingness on the part of the board to consider reducing the length of the student contact day? By the words, we're at 6 hours and 55 minutes right now, which is a fairly long day. And there are, there are districts that are more like 6 hours and 30 minutes in terms of length. Remember, 6 hours and 30 minutes actually means 6 hours and 5 minutes, because 25 minutes of that is used up with lunch and we cannot count that for instructional time. If there's a willingness to reduce the length of the student contact day, then you have the ability to impact when the end of the day is. So if you want to start the secondary later and start the elementary later, and you want to get the secondary to get out in a time, in a time that's closer to the original time that they've gotten out, by reducing the length of periods by about 3 to 5 minutes, you could push the start time back to 3 o'clock, maybe even 2:50. But you'd have to take into consideration, what does that do to the ability to provide instruction? And that's not only at the secondary level where you have periods of time that are broken down. We can't really reduce the passing time. So basically, it's just the time that's left in class. So you'd be going from 50 minutes down to 47 or 45. But you'd also be impacting the amount of hours of time that elementary teachers would have, because then you'd also looking, be looking at reducing the length of the elementary day. And remember, in our district, our elementary is just as long as our secondary. And we are, we have way more hours right now than we need to by law. But that's something as a board, you need to help me think about. Is that something that you have an interest in seeing reduced in order to try to not have the end of the day be changed significantly? So it's the concept of willingness to reduce the length of the class periods, which would reduce the end of times, time for secondary. Another option might be looking at reducing the number of secondary class periods. So right now, we have a seven-period day. We have a seven-period day because we have a number of kids that want to take everything. They want to take all the required classes, they want a foreign language, they want a variety of other opportunities, they want music opportunities and whatever. And many, in many cases, our kids take seven periods and find a way to take some other classes online or some other classes in other formats. So if you move down to a six-period day, you significantly reduce the number of classes that any student can take over a four-year period unless you open up options for them to take those classes online or in some other format outside the day. In terms of reducing secondary classes, you could also blow it open. You know, you could basically move from a seven-period day to a six-period day, you could move from a seven-period day to a four-period day. Understand, however, that any time you make those kinds of moves, typically, your cost to provide instruction is going to go up, because you have teachers with fewer classes. And also remember that, that when you do that, there's some contractual issues, because our contract has specific information about how many hours of teaching, how many hours of supervision, how many hours of preparation that individual teachers have available. The other piece, other three pieces then that I want you to think about is, first of all, the impact on Wednesday morning PLC. So now if we have a one-hour late start for PLC and we have a, an hour later start, we're starting it at 8:40 instead of 7:40 or 8:45, instead of 7:45, and then we go an extra hour out, now we have the equivalent of what we have when we have a really crummy snow day and we need to go two hours late. And we would be starting school then on that day in the 10 o'clock range. The next piece I want you to do some thinking about is, would there be, if that, you move that direction, a willingness to capture, reduce student contact time to provide daily PLC and professional development time? So if you would reduce the length of the day, you now would create a block of time that isn't prep time and it isn't student contact time. So you might be able to use it to create either professional development opportunities on a daily basis or PLCs more than one time a week. But they wouldn't be an hour, they'd be 30 minutes long. Whole different twist. And then finally, the last piece that we need to consider is additional transportation costs. If you would say, I'm not comfortable doing this unless we get elementary kids started earlier and secondary kids start later. And obviously, you know, we've looked at that before, we have tried on a couple of occasions to have that reviewed and have used an outside consultant. Typically, the answer back to us from the outside consultant is, to do a true flip requires you to move to a two-tier busing system. To move to a two-tier busing system is approximately $900,000 by the time you add all the extra buses and drivers to do that. And if you, you may have noticed when St. Paul was talking about doing this, that was the thing that kind of finally put the monkey wrench into it, because they looked at it and said, and said, you know, we're not spending 900, we're spending five, or six, or seven billion dollars to do that kind of flip. I've also talked a little bit to the bus company about, could we simply do the flip in terms of just trying to stay with a single tier, but moving the timeframe when school started? Well, the issue is, if we have a single tier, all of our high school, middle school, and elementary kids who live in the country would get picked up at the same time. So you could, in fact, drop the elementary kids off first, the middle school kids off second, and the high school kids off third. The kids aren't going to get any more sleep in their beds, because they're still going to have to get up. Our first kids get on the bus about 8:50, excuse me, about 6:50 in the morning, to get to school at 7:40. But you could basically flip the starting times, so that you could get elementary to start earlier than secondary. But it won't be perfect, and it won't be a zero cost, because, because we're a public school. We're required to provide transportation for St. Dominique, we're provided, required to provide transportation for Prairie Creek, and we're required to provide transportation for Arcadia. And the only way to do those, where they come from all over the school district, is to have a strategy that allows them to come into a single location, and then be put onto a different bus to get to school, or to go home. And so, we would still end up having to have more buses and more drivers. Nancy just wasn't able to give that number to me off the top of her head, but she played the numbers out. And her concern already, she said, with the busing strategy we currently have right now, we have students that are on buses one way, up to an hour and 15 minutes, or a total of two hours and 20-some minutes round trip for the day. So they're already on the bus a chunk of time, especially if I'm a student that lives out in Webster, or lives down south and west of Circle Lake, or if I live over in Good Falls County, in the two or three areas over there where we have part of it. So that piece, you know, there's a major cost, if you look at the flipping, and really, at that point, the flipping would only, with a single-tier system, would only allow you to just flip. So at that point, you'd start elementary school at some 45, and you start high school and middle school around 8:15, which doesn't get you to the 8:30 to 8:45, which is where the scientific research says, is when you start actually changing the time. But the other thing that you're dealing with is, even if we simply leave everything the way it is, and move everything back, you're still going to put every secondary kid on the bus, you know, approximately up to an hour, 45 minutes to an hour, before they actually have to get there. So it isn't like they're going to be able to sleep in until just before, you know, until 8:40 or 8:45. They still are going to have to get up, hopefully take a shower, get spruced up for the day, and hop on the bus and head out. So those are just the things that, in the brainstorming, we've thought about, that we need to hear from you about, you know, how do those things impact your thinking? Which pieces here, would you say, yes, I'd be willing to look at you, kind of playing out the option, if it did these things? Or are there some things on this list that, if you saw it, you would say, if it does this, I'm not interested anymore. I don't want to deal with it anymore. Because I would really like to, if we're going to go forward and do more work with this, I'd like to do it not creating options that have no way in the world of moving forward. And so, your help and guidance to me in terms of what you think should be happening here, and your willingness to take this forward, given what I've shared with you. Where are you? And I, no, I've basically, I'm watching Noel's eyes have glazed over. Are we there? We're past there, we might be past there. So again, help me to think about this piece in terms of, how do you want to play it out? Because tomorrow morning, based on what you tell me, if there are pieces that are still of interest in terms of what's here, then I will start with cabinet to talk about how we play those parts out, and who else we need to get in touch with to talk about. Because again, as we talked before, the idea of this is, is being able to come back with some, like, options that would say, here's what it's going to cost, here's going to be the impact on kids, here's what we can do with transportation, here's what this is going to do to co-curricular activities, here's what this is going to do for elementary start and end times, and secondary start and end times, and here's the impact it's going to have on the community and everybody that uses buildings and facilities after school's out. And here's the medical research on sleep for adolescents. Okay? All right. Do you want to comment?
Pardon me?
Are you waiting for comment?
Mm-hmm, I just have thoughts.
Yes, please.
I wrote mine out, because it's important enough, so I don't want to forget anything. And I will try to read it carefully. And I want to thank Dr. Richardson and the cabinet for all the work they've done on this last information in a very short time. I like the concept, and could willing to support the concept, but the reality of implementing the concept is complex, because there are so many players. Northfield is not an island. I don't see how this can be integrated just in Northfield. And I say that with concern, only by addressing the issue at the district level. There are family components, activity components, conference and state components. I think it's impossible to put it all together, and have a successful program. And I don't see a way that I can support the execution of this right now.
Are there comments or thoughts? Julie?
Well, you know, yeah, again, I tackle what Noel said. I appreciate the hard work that was done in such a short amount of time on this. And I've given it a great deal of thought, and I think anytime you're making decisions about start times for your school, you know, there's a number of issues that have to be balanced, and they have to really be guided by what's in the best interest of all students. And a number of these guiding principles, for me, there's a number of things that are immediately off the table, in terms of not wanting to reduce the amount of instructional time, certainly not wanting to reduce the number of class periods at the high school. I'm real, very concerned about that late end date, particularly for the elementary going as late as four o'clock. The, the amount of time that students would be out of, seventh hour, both students and teachers, and then additionally, when we have elementary teachers who are coaches, that's just that much more time they are out of a classroom as an elementary teacher. So in light of that, balance, that's what we know, the research, while very compelling in terms of really having merit, I think that to balance the decision against what's in best interest of all students, I don't see how we can move forward. However, I do think it's something that, because it has merit, if there's any way in the future, we can really take a look at how we could make changes going forward. Right now, with the single-tier busing system, and a $900,000 price tag to just make this quickly happen, or easily happen, that again, is off the table for me. I think in light of that single-tier busing system, it really makes it very complex. And I think, as I look at my responsibility as a board member, in terms of making decisions that are in the best interest of all students in the district, that's where I think this comes up short for me.
Well, being a lame duck who won't vote on it anyway, I don't have any bright lines that I'd say, you can't cross to make it work. But it does seem to me that the issues are, how do you determine the perfect start time? Because circadian rhythms are different for all of us. And as either Voltaire or Mark Twain said, depending on where you look on the internet, all generalizations are false. So...
Martin Twain did, good.
One of them might have said...
He invented the internet, eh? He and Al Gore.
But, so, you know, I mean, if what Dr. Hoff said was, was accurate, then you would say that Winona has the, has the best calendar out of the big nine. But how do you make that work out of the, out of the group? And how do you find the right start time? And I think it's, because it's so different for everyone, I'm not sure you can find the perfect start time. And as he said, we don't know what the, what the research, there's no research on elementary students. And so, what's the right start time for elementary students? And I think the concern of having the elementary students, and really, any students, you know, coming home after dark in November, December, January, is something that, is something we should all be concerned about as well. And so, I don't know what the answers are, but I do think that there are, certainly there are a lot of things to consider in balancing it in Germany, whether or not there's, there is an approach that does work.
One of these issues that really is important to me is the possible reducing of secondary class periods from seven to six or less. And I think that, at our high school, we're known for having a really good variety of academic classes, AP classes, and to reduce that, I think would be a shame, because we have really strong students in our district who want to take advantage of those programs.
Ready to weigh in?
Well, I'm reluctant to weigh in, because I'm like John, I won't be here to...
But I, but I have feelings about this, and I agree with Anne. I think reducing the number of class periods at the secondary level, I think, is a, is a big problem. I mean, we have students who do take, I mean, a lot of students who need every one of those seven periods, and would love to have eight. So I feel strongly about that. I think there, I think there are concerns with reducing the length of class periods for some kinds of classes, like labs, and that kind of thing, and I don't know if the flipped classroom would help with that. You know, may ease some of the need for that, that timeframe. I'm intrigued by the, the idea of changing your start and end times, given our current focus on mental health issues, and emotional and behavioral issues, and the research seems to indicate that this could help a lot with that, and so I would like, you know, in my mind, I look at all of this, and I think these are all, you know, big concerns, but there's also potentially a huge benefit to, to having a later start time. I don't think it's a simple thing. I mean, I don't think it's something we could decide to do this, like, now for next year. And I'm sure the advocates for that would, would be very unhappy with that. But, but it feels like something that needs a lot of deep think time about how it could really work. And, you know, so I think there is merit to exploring that, and maybe not starting with a task force that's working on the nuts and bolts of how to implement it, but really, you know, maybe bringing it to support student support services, or something like that, to dig deeper into how it could be done, how, what the benefits might be, and, you know, I just, to really, really think outside the box. I mean, I don't know if there's a way to do it for, just for some students, you know, to not have to have that first hour. I don't know, I'm just, just, you know, just let all the holes in, we really think about it.
And actually, we actually have that already. In other words, we have secondary students who don't take a first-hour class. They stay home.
Yes, but it's not, it's, that's not...
But it's not for everybody.
Intentional for students who would most benefit from it, necessarily. So, you know, that's where I'm saying, just, just really try to think outside the box on it. So I guess I'm not, I'm not ready to say, we can't do it, it's too hard, but I'm also not, not ready to just say, sure, figure it out, go for it. I think it just is going to take a lot more thinking. I agree with John, I think it's a big problem to be thinking about kids, little ones coming home when it's dark. I have less concern about kids missing class, or teachers missing class, because of when we schedule our athletic contests, because maybe what needs to happen is that the times of those athletic contests needs to be changed, rather than adjusting the school schedule to fit when the games are held. But, you know, again, it's a bigger conversation, and it, you know, it appears that there may be more people in our conference that are thinking about doing it, and that may, you know, might be a problem that kind of starts to solve itself, as more and more people move towards it. Complete lack of clarity from me.
Actually, you were pretty clear. So I've been really struggling with it, thinking through it, probably because I have two teenagers, so I didn't really even have to read the study to know. I'm sure some of us... And it's really compelling, but looking at the research and how you have to start after 8:30 to really see, for the, the scientific results to show through, and thinking about the trade-offs. And I guess I was thinking, like Carrie, that, and Julie said this too, are there, if, if the district isn't looking at this, I would, I'm almost thinking it's a five-to-ten-year thing, is how does the technology transformation help? How does the space issues help? Like, we didn't talk about passing time, but if you could reclaim passing time into more instructional time, what would that look like? Because where I was struggling with, I, I know we've said it before, but just to be clear, my, my thoughts too, is the, the little kiddos being on the bus till 5:15. And then, you know, I got kind of excited last time, we're like, reduce the school day, but then the more I thought about that, I thought, really? Could I go out to the community and say, we think this is so important, that we want to reduce all of the students' school day? And we don't know that, because when you look at the research, or this multi-study research, that those sites weren't dealing with the single-tier bus system. So they weren't saying, this is, you know, it's better to do this, than, and they don't have that trade-off. So we, I don't think, in good conscience, I could say, this is how we'd want to spend our time, either. So if you're looking for a direction, I guess, from my perspective, I think right now, I, what I'm hearing from board members too, is that it sounds like, with our single-tier bus system, for right now, some of these challenges are bigger than what the challenges were that this, other schools in the study dealt with, because we would be having to look at what would happen in our elementary schools, or having to reduce our school day. And it sounds like people aren't interested in a less than a seven-hour day, so that makes that really tough. There's really concerns about what happens in, with this later end time for elementary schools. Those are really competing constraints. So I guess what I'm hearing from board members is, if this, that philosophically, people think this is a great idea, but in reality, in the short term, this doesn't seem like something that we want administration to spend time on right now, thinking about it in a very short-term solution. Is that fair to say? That if we want to think more deeply about things? Carrie, why don't you try and hear about what you mean by more deeply?
I would like to keep it in the, in the mix, especially as we look at mental health and emotional behavior, those kinds of things, how we can better support students. I think, you know, I think it's important to keep it in the mix. And I think the technology, the flipped classroom, and how that may make it possible to have a shorter school day, or different kind of school day. to have a shorter school day or a different kind of school day. But I think the concerns expressed about how you would implement this quickly, I think, are really valid. And I can't, I can't see a solution.
And again, the pieces, I've tried to look at those districts that are doing this. I think to a district, they have multi-tier systems.
Does Winona?
No. Winona doesn't. But those that actually went into this to create the later start, I think, I honestly, I have not talked to Stephen. They got a new soup this fall. See, they may have a multi-tier system already because of the nature of their routes. If you think about it, they're along the bluffs, which means if you think about every time we have a late start, Winona is one of the first ones that goes late. I am guessing that they have to have more buses because they have greater distance and more difficult travel than we do to get a group of kids picked up, where, you know, we try very hard to fully load every bus before they come into school so that we maximize the number of students that are there. I would have to sit down and talk to Stephen, and then the question is going to be, does he really know any of the history for how that got there? I might actually have to go back to the previous superintendent to see if he could shed some light on it. I just know that realistically, I'm sure they're looking at a strategy that says, "Let's make sure the sun is up and there's as much daylight as possible before we take them out on those ridge roads or on those bluff roads. And let's, if we get done at 3:30, I'm not totally sure that we aren't seeing the entire district getting out at about the same time," which would lead me to believe that they're a multi-tier system. I just don't, I just don't have that data to know what's going on there. Well, I think the important thing here is you've kind of said to me very clearly, not interested in less than seven-period day unless we have a major technological shift in terms of how we present classes. Not interested really in having elementary kids go later into the afternoon. And basically, I, it was, am I also hearing really even the idea of looking at a slightly shortened day wouldn't cut it either? So in other words, if we went from 6:55 to 6:30, which would give you 45-minute periods instead of 15-minute periods, there's not really interest in going that direction either because of the start and end and close-up and setup of class activities. So if we're going to do it, we've got to keep 15-minute periods. And we would have to keep, we'd have to have some strategy that will allow us to keep seven periods in place, given our current technological ability to do the work. And right now, then, that takes you back to the only option that would get you there would be, would be, you know, shifting the bus, having a different kind of bus structure. And you'd still have, you would still have, because I'm not hearing people say that you necessarily would fight or push back on a 3:30 end time for high school if it wasn't causing a four-point end time for elementary.
I think that's accurate.
Okay. I just want to make sure I'm clear on what you're saying.
I think there's certainly challenges if you had a teacher bus system and looked at it, but I think it would be just much more palatable because we wouldn't be looking at some of these other trade-offs.
Yeah. That would take several of the trade-offs away. But I also think it was really important for me to hear, "No, we want a seven-period day," at least in the current setting. We don't want a shortened period. So without those, there's no way that I can see to play some of these other pieces out if we're keeping, if we're keeping everything else aligned. So. Okay. All right. I think I have my marching orders, or my non-marching orders. All right? Thank you very much.
So I remind board members, we already did item for individual action number one in conjunction with our audit report. So now we are ready to move on to additions to school board policy 441 and policy 805. One needs to acknowledge in self-communications and one ways reduction, which we presented at the previous board meeting.
And again, would just reflect to you that the purpose of addressing these two policies are actually additions to the two existing policy 441 and 805, is to address the executive order, which basically requires us to have these pieces in place in order to take federal grant funding. And we have had an opportunity to talk to the association about these. They understand what the reasoning is behind this. And again, our purpose here is simply to keep us in a good position to continue to get resources that help us provide programming and opportunities for our kids. And so, at this point, unless you have further questions, my recommendation is for you to approve the modifications of these two policies.
All right. Because this is an item for individual action, I'd like to have a motion stuck on the table before we have discussion.
Same.
Moved by Julie.
Second.
Oh, seconded by John. Questions, discussion? All right. All those in favor of approving the policies as revised, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The policies are approved. All right. We are ready to move on to our consent grouping. I remind board members, there are some additional personnel items added in the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone wishes to pull from the consent grouping? I ask for a motion to approve the consent grouping.
Second.
Moved by Anne, seconded by John. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Items for information, the enrollment options report is ready.
The enrollment options report, again, is in your materials. What you'll notice as you take a look at this is that there have been a slight increase in the number of students going to other public schools outside our district. But again, there's a lot of variation with probably the greatest growth in terms of students going to Farmington, Lakeville, and to Randolph. As we see kids coming in, the increases have been increased from Faribault. And again, however, if you look at outmigration to public schools versus inmigration from other public schools, we're sitting at a 282-student increase from other public schools, a 187-student decrease that are going from our district to another public school. We also continue to have students going to non-public, but you'll notice that number is down, about 20 students from previous years. If you look at the number of students going to homeschool, we have about a 10-student increase coming in with that number, again, great variations from kind of one grade to the next, with a few more students at kindergarten, a few more students at grade two, and a few more students in grade four and grade six. And then also some reductions in the numbers of students. And then in terms of charter schools this year, we're sitting at, we've gone down from 292 students going to a variety of different charter schools, down to 288 students going to charter schools, with a few more going to both Arcadia and Prairie Creek. And basically, reduction for the most part in terms of students going out, except for head visions, which is an off-campus program. The other MTCS connection program, you've seen a significant drop. So overall, this is very much along the pattern that we've seen over the last several years with maximizing the two charter schools that are in our system, receiving students from our district. The non-public's actually coming down a bit, homeschool staying fairly flat, and our numbers of students coming in from outside the district from other public schools continuing at about 282 versus the outmigration from our district to other public schools sitting at about 187. So I would stand for any questions you might have on this report.
Any questions? Our second item for information is the property casualty liability insurance preview.
Yes. So what I just want to give you a heads up on is...
Very exciting piece. It's kind of like the audit, only even more exciting.
It is, yes. But property casualty liability insurance is a piece that the district obviously renews on an annual basis, and our renewal date is January 1. Routinely, we don't bring that particular piece to the board. It's part of how we do business, and we take care of that for you. However, we have been approached by a group called the Minnesota Interscholastic Trust, which is a cooperative of school districts coming together for this kind of insurance. We just got their quotation today. We're getting quotations from our other vendors this week. An interesting piece I've missed is that they require a roll call vote, you know, by the board in order to join it. And if they were a successful, we don't know. But I'm just giving you the heads up that they have made a quote, part of their bylaws require a board action, and then it's also a minimum of a three-year commitment. We don't know if they are going to be the winning quotation or not, but I just want you to have that heads up because normally, this is the kind of thing we would bring to you twice. But because we only have one board meeting in December and we have to renew on January 1, it just isn't an option. So it's just simply a prayer to say, "You may or may not hear something about the property liability casualty on December 8th, but you know it might be coming."
And I do have one other item, just to tickle your thinking. Okay. And again, knowing that we have two individuals that will be leaving us at the end of the year, but for the other five of you and Margaret, who's in the audience, to be thinking about. Another piece that we looked at, and actually, this was something Lyndonita brought back from her session with Big Nine Conference Administrative Assistance, is they were talking about school board meeting start times. And if you remember 10 years ago, 11 years ago, when I came here, we actually moved the board meeting start from 7:30 to 7:00. And over the years, we've had some individuals that were on the board that 7:00 start was tough because they were coming out of the Twin Cities and having to, you know, get back for a meeting. But what we found is that this is something where we are way out of the realm of where the other Big Nine districts are. All of them start anywhere from 5:00 in the afternoon, which is the earliest. There are four districts that start at 5:30 with their July and August meetings being at 5:00. There's one group that starts at 6:00. There's one that starts at 6:30, but it's considering moving to 5:00 or 5:30. And there's one group at 6:30. And we're at 7:00. So not that anything absolutely has to happen tonight, but I just want to have you thinking about that as we get ready for the January reorganization meeting, whether there is any interest in looking at an earlier start time for your board meetings. And not because I want it then to turn into a five-hour meeting till 10:00, but with the idea that on the flip side, if you had a normal two-to-three-hour meeting, you might be out by 8:00 instead of 10:00.
The other interesting thing was, most of the other Big Nine schools' board meetings last 45 minutes, an hour. I know. I was shocked to hear that. Is that what you're finding too, Mom?
Yeah. That's why Mommy doesn't come to our meetings for hours. She knows how long they're going to run.
I was stunned when I told her how long it goes.
When I came on the board, frequently meetings lasted two days, and that means they went past midnight.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't want to go there either, no. But it was just, I mean, again, it's just a thought that we may be in a situation right now, given the membership on the board, that potentially an early start, we might not be out of the realm of possibility. And it is not, it is not unique or unusual for school boards to start earlier.
All right.
Okay? So just as for information.
And we had fall parent-teacher conferences.
Yes. And you have the listing in terms of fall parent-teacher conferences, including the 94% information from Green Hill Park, which was the only item that was not listed.
I just wanted to make one comment. I just want to, you know, give so much credit to the administrators who really try to really consider ways to value-add to teacher conferences. I think that there's not, you know, you kind of alluded to it too, Greg, in terms of what, you know, what kind of things can you do at that time to make parents really feel like that time is valuable, that you're bringing them in, you're talking about the student, but what other education pieces can we do? What can make them feel, you know, like it's a real value-add? And one of the things Joel Lear did was the workforce development. He and Mark Enzru had, Mark Jacobs, who's the workforce development coordinator from Dakota County, come, and that, the choir room was packed. They had to bring in extra chairs. So I think when you get topics that are of great interest to parents, it brings them in the building not only for conferences, but they really appreciate the opportunity. And it was interesting because they asked, show of hands for the different grades, and there was equal parents, ninth through 12th grade, that were there. So anyway, I think it's really great the way, you know, they're always trying to look for ways to improve that, not only for the interaction, but value-add for the parents.
All right. Future meetings? We have one more meeting this year, December 8, and then we're on to January 12, with an organizational meeting and a regular school board meeting.
You bet.
So with that, I would ask...